The council will now come to order. Members, please take your seats. Visitors will retire to the seats outside the rails. Before proceeding, I will ask all those present to please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate. On this special day, we will be having an interfaith invocation and presentation. And so first, I'm going to ask for Imam Yahya Adam of Masjid Al Jima of Philadelphia. He is here today as the guest of Councilmember Jamie Gardiere. I will ask for all members and guests to please arise.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Imam Yahya Adam from Masjidul Jamaa, and I'm here to lead the Islamic prayer. And I would like to do it the traditional way, which is always said in Arabic. And I hope and pray God will answer our prayer. Bismillah, rahmanir rahim. Alhamdulillah, rabbil alamin. Rahmanir rahim. Maliki yowumiddin. Iyyaka na'budu wa iyyaka nas'ta'in. Ihdina sira'tal mustaqim. Sira'tal ladzina an'amta alaihim. Ghairil mukdubi alaihim. Walad dawalin. Amin. Allahumma j'al jama'anah. Hada jama'an marhumaa. Waj'al tafarruqana min ba'dihi. Tafarruqan ma'suma. Walat jama'an. Walat j'al ma'aana. Walafina. Walaminna shakiyam. Walamahrooma. Thank you very much. I would like to make it brief, and I hope and pray that this will be a wonderful meeting. Thank you, everyone, and thank you for having us here. We appreciate it so much. Wassalamu alaykum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Peace be on you.
Also joining us today from Brooklyn, New York, not a stranger to the city of Philadelphia, former executive with the DNC who helped propel our last great president to become the President of these United States, but she's here today in the form of the cloth, Bishop Leah Dottry, presiding prelate of the House of the Lord of Church, on here on behalf of Majority Leader, Councilwoman Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Some of you will rebuild the ancient ruins. You will restore the foundations laid long ago. You will be called the repairer of broken walls, the restorer of streets in which to dwell. Let us pray. Oh God, Creator of heaven and earth, lover of peace, freedom, and justice, we thank you for the grace you have given to us, to live in so great a country that celebrates and embraces the open and exuberant free exchange of ideas. We thank you for those who gather today in this chamber, seeking to fulfill the responsibility of faithful citizenship, and who give so freely of their time, their talent, and their treasure, for a cause and a purpose that is greater than themselves. For them and for ourselves, for the work that must be done, for the bridges that must be built, for the children who must be saved, for the sick who must be healed, for the last who must be first. We ask for strength for the journey, clarity of thought, sharpness of vision, singleness of purpose, and the courage of our convictions, to make the promise of America the practice of America. Because we ask it in your name, we decree and declare that it is so. And all the people of God say, amen.
To chair things, the Imam and the bishop for their invocation, council will now be at ease. Such a great show of unity. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 1, 2024. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 1, 2024 be approved.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 1, 2024 stand approved. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
The Chair thanks the Councilmember. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the minority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
The Chair thanks the Councilmember. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council, and as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a resolution on or returning a resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the legislative matter stated by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson may be added to the agenda for today, should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. The Chair will now dispense with the regular order of business to recognize guests and visitors joining us in the chambers this morning. On behalf of all members of City Council, I welcome you to our council session. We appreciate you taking the time to join us as we attend the legislative affairs of our great city. We certainly invite you to come again. We have a couple guests who are here with us today, and so at this moment, I'm going to dispense with the regular order of business and recognize Councilwoman Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, Council President and colleagues. Today, I have the humble honor and privilege to welcome again a very special guest to Philadelphia City Council. Today, we are joined by Bishop Leah Dottry, convener of the 2024 Power Rising Summit. Power Rising provides a safe and inclusive space for an intergenerational network of Black women to turn power into action and create an actionable agenda to be implemented in our communities. By leveraging social, political, professional, cultural, and economic power, these women are able to utilize their influence for the betterment of ourselves, our communities, and our country. This year's summit is taking place right here in Philadelphia, the birthplace of democracy, from February 8 to February 11. Bishop Leah Dottry had the distinct honor of being the CEO of the Democratic National Convention. Bishop Dottry is the only person in the party's history to be the CEO of two, not one, but two Democratic National Conventions, including here in the great city of Philadelphia. The first being in 2008 with the nomination of President Barack Obama, and the second convention she chaired was here in Philadelphia in 2016 to nominate Secretary Hillary Clinton. I want to thank you for joining us here in the great city of Philadelphia with your special guests, Ashanti Golar, President and CEO of Emerge, Sharon Dottry, Executive Director of DBNA, Tina Akintio, Principal of Akintio Management Group, and Laya Henderson, as well as Simone, who has helped us organize this wonderful visit. We welcome you all to the great city of Philadelphia, the city of brotherly love and sisterly effectiveness. Thank you.
The Chair now recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gardiere.
Thank you so much, Council President. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge everyone who's here today to help us honor the life and celebrate the memory of Emmanuel Kelly. I want to extend a special welcome to Emmanuel Kelly's wife, Diane Kelly, the entire Kelly family, and the team from Kelly Maayo Architects. Emmanuel Kelly passed on late last month, but his mark on Philadelphia will live on for generations. He founded Kelly Maayo Architects, one of the first Black-owned architecture firms in the city, and the team behind dozens of public spaces, including the Redding Terminal Market, West Philly High, the Criminal Justice Center, and much, much more. Recently, his firm was also the lead design firm, helping rebuild with the King Sessing Rec. Center. And so, you know, he's left his mark physically on our city's built architecture, but he's also been a leader in the design community and beyond. He was someone that I personally looked up to. He reached out to me many times with encouragement in, you know, in my fight for more affordable housing in the 3rd District and across the city, and his mark will live on in this city forever. And so, we're going to hear from his loved ones and his friends during public comment, and I just want to welcome them today. Thank you so much, Council President.
Thank you. Could we give the family a round of applause, please? Can they stand? Can the Kelly family stand? Can the Kelly family stand? Okay.
They might be still en route.
Okay.
But we will receive them when they get here.
Absolutely. Emmanuel was a great chairman. We do not have any presentations to make today, therefore, the next order of business is communication. The Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms deliver the messages from the mayor to the Chief Clerk. The Chief Clerk will read the messages from the mayor.
To the President, to members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body. Our resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2501, 2855, 2857 Amber Street, 2143, 2155, 2157 East Birch Street, 2134, 2172 East Cambria Street, 2103, and 2107 East Cumberland Street, 2107 East Dakota Street, 2478 and 2480 Emerald Street, 2022 East Fletcher Street, 1929, 1935, 1943, and 25 through 15 through 17 East Harold Street, 2637, 2639, 2643, 2645, and 2649 Janey Street, 2536 Jasper Street, 2639, 2641, 2643, 2653 Kensington Avenue, 2068 East Mountmouth Street, 1844 East Oakdale Street, 2140, 2151, 2153, and 2156 East Orleans Street, 2646, 2658 Ritter Street, 2089 East Somerset Street, 2106, 2133, 2135, 2250, and 2252 East Williams Street, located in the 1st Councilmanic District, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you. The messages will be printed in the journal. The Chief Clerk will please read any other communications in his possession.
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Clerk. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Anthony Phillips.
Thank you. Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues, and good morning to you in public. Council President, I have no bills or resolutions for introduction today.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. I offer no bills or resolutions this morning.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gardiere.
Thank you, Council President. I offer one bill and one privileged resolution today.
Would the clerk please read the titles of the bills and resolutions?
An ordinance amending Sections 1 and 2 of an ordinance, Bill Number 170086, approved May 22, 2017, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing the Revision of Lines and Grades on a Portion of City Plan Number 269 by Relocating Portions of the House Lines and Carbs Lines of Convention Avenue from 34th Street to Health Sciences Drive."
This bill will refer to appropriate committee?
And a privileged resolution honoring and commemorating the life and legacy of revered Philadelphian professor and architect Emmanuel Kelly.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the listening public. Today, I have two resolutions to offer to the body. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Would the clerk please read the titles of the resolutions?
A privileged resolution recognizing and congratulating the champion of the week, 5th Grader Emily Enscore, for her work raising money for Project Home to help end cycles of poverty and homelessness in Philadelphia. A reminder to all of us that little Philadelphians can do big things.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar?
And a privileged resolution recognizing the impact of Pennsylvania's Clean Slate Law and celebrating its recent expansion.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones Jr.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. One resolution today.
Would the clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Public Safety to hold public hearings examining witness relocation policies in the city of Philadelphia, as well as discuss strategies on creating a housing rehabilitation and witness relocation program that will allow for higher rates of witness attendance and an increase in the closure rate of homicide cases.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. I have one bill to introduce today.
Would the clerk please read the title of the bill?
An ordinance amending Chapter 9, 600 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled "Service and Other Businesses," to add requirements related to the practices of tax preparation service providers to increase transparency about free tax preparation services in the city of Philadelphia.
This bill will refer to the appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Katzie Lazada.
Thank you, Council President. I offer no bills, no resolutions today.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Council President. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. I have one bill for today.
Would the clerk please read the title of the bill?
An ordinance amending Chapter 9, 2300 of the Philadelphia Code, "Protection of Displaced Contract Workers," to provide protections for service employees, including laid-off employees, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nicholas Nick O'Rourke.
Thank you, Council President. I have nothing to introduce today.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll.
Good morning, Mr. President. I offer one bill for consideration today.
Would the clerk please read the title of the bill?
An ordinance amending Title 12 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled "Traffic Code," by providing for prohibitions relating to license plate flipping devices, and for penalties and enforcement.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mark Squillo from the...
Good morning, Mr. President. I offer one non-privileged resolution.
Would the clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2501, 2855, and 2857 Amber Street, 2143, 2155, and 2157 East Birch Street, 2134, 2172 East Cambria Street, 2103, and 2107 East Cumberland Street, 2107 East Dakota Street, 2478, 2480 Emerald Street, 2022 East Fletcher Street.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one privileged resolution and one bill.
Would the clerk please read the title of the bill and resolution?
An ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Oak, York Road, and Cortland Street on Loudoun Street.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee?
And a non-privileged resolution renaming the 6,000 block of Norwood Street Frankie Beverly Way.
I'll pull the clap for that one. This resolution will be placed... This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in our next session of council. There being no reports from committees today, the next order of business is the consideration of the calendar, as there are no bills... Let me go back. My sister over there. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Ahmad.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last is the best.
Yes, it is.
I have no bills or resolutions to offer today.
Thank you very much. Excuse me for my oversight, Councilmember Ahmad. The next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. As there are no bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for the purpose of calling up resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendars.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers 240073, 240074, and 240081.
Thank you. Before considering these resolutions, we will consider public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at today's council session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up for today's session, please do so now by giving your name to Ms. Hanson at the table outside the rails to my left. Once you have signed up, you will be called in the order in which your name appears on a sign-up sheet. Under ideal circumstances, public commenters will each have three minutes to speak. However, this time limit may vary from session to session. Today, the time limit will be two minutes. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the two-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium when there are 30 seconds remaining. Your time on the light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to conclude your remarks. Once the two minutes have passed, the light will turn red, and the Sergeant at Arms will disconnect the microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not already done so. I also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of council to limit repetitious comments on the same matter. I will now ask the Chief Clerk to please read the first name of our speaker, and we have a very extensive list today.
The first speaker today, Mr. President, is Queen Judith Robinson.
Would the clerk please call the next speaker?
The next speaker is Stephen Bilski, commenting on 240074.
Councilmembers, good morning. I'm Stephen Bilski, CEO of Memphis Street Academy Charter School at JP Jones. Thank you for allowing me to make public comment today in support of Resolution 240074, the establishment of the Kensington Caucus. I wanted to personally speak at today's City Council meeting to vocalize my school's support in this innovative coalition to tackle cleanup efforts in hopes of making Kensington safer. As a middle school in Port Richmond serving grades 5 through 8, students travel through Kensington's open-air drug market on a daily basis. The pervasive presence of violence, crime, and drugs become a recipe for trauma that they then carry through the school doors. Every day, these students are forced to start their days making their best attempt at blocking out these images and experiences, to do their best at concentrating on academics. Far too many suffer in silence as we attempt to meet their holistic and academic needs. Recently, the landmark Pennsylvania Supreme Court decision, William Penn School District versus the Department of Education, ruled that the system of Pennsylvania uses to fund its public schools is unconstitutionally inequitable. More importantly, the Supreme Court's decision stipulated that education in the state of Pennsylvania is a fundamental right. So when we discuss the magnitude and significance of addressing Kensington's open-air drug market, we're really talking and discussing students' rights to a free education. I have been confronted by countless times by concerned parents, guardians, and even students about traversing through their communities and their neighborhoods, oftentimes explaining that the reason they could not come to school was because of the safety concerns in and around the community. Councilmember Lazado said it perfectly. The residents of Kensington deserve collaborative strategic framework, or teamwork, and we, Memphis Street Academy Charter School, are ready to enter into this partnership. This is why we wholeheartedly support Councilmembers Lazado, Driscoll, Harity, and Squillo's Kensington Caucus to make a positive impact on this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the Chief Clerk please call the next speaker?
Diane Kelly.
She's coming. I would ask that the next speaker please also come to the podium to be prepared when your name is called.
My name is Diane Kelly, and I'm here to thank the council for its recognition of my husband and his accomplishments, Emmanuel Kelly. I'm reminded of the phrase, "It doesn't take great men to do things, but it's doing things that make men great." And the thing I remember about my husband is his warmth and integrity, and it reminds me of a poem, "The Measure of a Man," that goes, "The measure of a man is not determined by his show of outward strength, or the volume of his voice, or the thunder of his actions, or of his intellect and academic abilities. It is seen rather in terms of the love he has for his family and for everyone, the genuineness of his friendships, the sincerity of his purpose, the quiet courage of his convictions, the fond laughter..." the fond laughter, joy, and happiness he gives to his family and others, his love of life, his patience, and his honesty, and his contentment with what he has." And my husband was very content. I asked him once what made him happy, and he said, "I don't do happiness. I do satisfaction and contentment. And I'm where I want to be, I'm doing what I want, and I'm with who I want to be with. That's what makes me content." And so to my husband of 45 years, it was my honor and privilege to have shared his journey. Thank you.
Will the Chief Clerk please call the next speaker?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Troy Leonard, and I'm the Principal and President of Kelly Maello Architects. And I'm here to speak on behalf of Emmanuel Kelly. I've known Kelly for more than 40 years in many different capacities. First, as a student while attending Temple University. And secondly, I've known him-- Secondly, I've known him as an employer when in 1989, he hired me as an intern at Kelly Maello Architects, KMA, and I worked my way up to project architect and finally associate. And then finally, I have known him as an associate and a friend, where in 2015, he turned over the reins of Kelly Maello, and I became the employer and he became the employee. And he took on the title of founding principal, where he served in that role until the day he died. There are many great things that I can say about Emmanuel, but the one consistent thing is that he had integrity and dedication for Philadelphia. And this is exemplified in his three-plus decades as a professor at Temple University, where he's taught many young architects who are currently serving as great leaders in this city. Secondly, as a leader, where he co-founded Kelly Maello in the early '70s. And then finally, as a professional, where he designed many iconic buildings in Philadelphia. So I can't think of a more deserving person than Emmanuel Kelly for this award. Thank you.
Just want to say to the Kelly family, I've worked with Emmanuel Kelly since I became a councilperson in the Second Councilmanic District. And he definitely was a giant of a man. And he also showed that we have highly qualified African-American architects here in the city of Philadelphia that can build the tallest buildings that you've ever seen in the world. And so to the family, I want to also, this person, give my condolences because he was definitely someone that I looked up to in the development community and was very, very supportive of all his efforts, especially when developers would come to my office and say, "Well, we can't find an architect." Well, here's an example of someone who's doing that type of great work. And so to the family, we would definitely keep you and your family in prayer. Will the Chief Clerk please call the next person for public comment?
Recalling Queen Judith Robinson.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. Queen Judith Robinson here. Black History 365, we need it room so much so. The Kensington bill, we need that citywide. We can't let that horror flow into other communities. So I understand the opioid crisis is moving across our city. Let's not stop there. I'm going to put a pen in it because I'm going to say, "To be continued." I have a message from Queen Sephora of Gray's Ferry regarding the increase in rental estate taxes. I'm going to bring that mission to her councilperson, Council President Johnson. Okay, so there's queens in Philadelphia all over, Councilman Anthony Phillips, and we're going to come out of the woodworks and let you all know that we exist. In that regard, Sir Emmanuel Kelly, condolences to his family and peace and blessings to them. I am a certified tour guide, and I'm going to be doing tours in City Hall shortly. But I'm certified through the Foundation for Architecture back from 2000, and Emmanuel Kelly was there to help me through that process. I was the only African-American in the class, which I paid to get this knowledge. And he was there with that quality, quiet twinkle in his eye of approval. Then I met him again as I was on the board of the Avocat Community Development Corporation, as he did the refurbishing, the recreation of the gym that had-- area that had burnt down, and how he matched the stone of the old stone of the Church of the Avocat, where I'm a docent. I am pushing for a historic diamond street, the first historic corridor. Preservation Alliance is still a very white-oriented organization that Foundation for Architecture was all those 25 years ago. They need to get their minds right. They're out of touch with black queens. With that, I'm going to say, friends of Tanner House, 32nd Ward, RCO, get in formation. Peace.
Will the Chief Clerk please call the next speaker?
The next speaker is Marnie Lowry, commenting on 240074.
My name is Marnie Almond Lockery. I'm the Democratic Ward Leader of the 33rd Ward, and I am the Chair of Kensington Independent Civic Association. I am here in support of the Kensington Caucus. Many of yous know me. I've been here before. I want to take the time to thank Councilwoman Lozado, our newest city councilperson for the 7th District, Councilman Harity, Councilman Driscoll, and Councilman Squillo, who has been fighting this fight with us the longest as he is the senior member of the caucus. He has walked the streets with us, and he has seen our children and what we have to deal with. This initiative being taken by this body is giving hope back to our children and our community. Many of our community members are standing right here with us. We are letting you know what our children have to see every day, our seniors that cannot come out of their houses to go to a store. We have businesses that shut down because of the issues going on here. And yes, as the queen said, this is all over the city. It's all over our country, but Kensington has been inundated the most. When this caucus and this body, under this new administration, gets this together, which yous are doing, this is a project that can spread to the rest of not only our city, but the rest of the state and the rest of the country. Thank you, Philadelphia city council members, for being the first, as we have always been the first, to take an initiative, to take care of the people that you are elected to take care of. You have my heart, and you have my soul, and I thank you for the future that you have given our children and our seniors. We here have been fighting for eight years. Eight years. This has been going on, and it has taken a new mayor and a brand-new council to get done what we have been begging and praying for. And I thank yous all for that. And I thank you, Councilman Squillo, for walking with us. I don't know how many times we shut down Kensington and Allegheny. We walked from Somerset all the way up. This new administration, I thank you with my heart. I thank you with my soul, and I thank you for the future of our children.
Thank you. Will a clerk please call the next speaker?
Good morning. My name is Sulaiman Hassan. First and foremost, I want to thank everybody that's here today, council, and everyone from the community in the city of Philadelphia. I'm here to represent Soldiers for Recovery as well as One Day at a Time program. I'm going to jump right into it. I grew up in Philadelphia all my life. All my life, I've been subjected to tra-- trauma, childhood trauma due to my mother's addiction. When I got older, I wound up becoming addicted to drugs and alcohol as well for over 20 years. I found myself up in Kensington, living on the streets, sleeping on the streets, going to bathroom on the streets. Everything that you see, that's what I was a part of. I turned my life around 10 years ago. I started going right back to the same streets that I slept on, went to the bathroom on, did drugs on, helping the community. And due to programs like One Day at a Time, that's like family to me. But we need to understand that people that are up there, they're sick, but they're family. And that's a small community that needs our assistance. It needs our help. It's kids out there that can't even walk down the street. It's kids out there that have to walk through glass and feces. And you know, it's terrible. It brings tears in my eyes. And anybody that knows me in this room, they know what I do. I'm out there every day pulling people out from the disease of addiction to give them hope. And it's going to take love. It's going to take programs like One Day at a Time. It's going to take programs like Soldiers for Recovery to get out there to help clean, to get a community back to the people. I've been clean now for 10 years, and I'm so grateful for it due to the One Day at a Time programs. You have doctors out there. You have lawyers out there. I have developed friends and family out there who have lost their way with master's degrees, doctor's degrees, who have just lost their way. I can stand here today and say, "I'm a grandfather now. We need to-- I'm a home owner now. I'm a business owner now due to programs like the One Day at a Time." So please, please, help us give the community back to the people.
Will a clerk please call the next speaker?
Good morning. My name is Jamie Gullen, and I'm the managing attorney of the Employment Unit and Youth Justice Project at Community Legal Services. I want to thank Councilmember Thomas and all of council for recognizing the expansion of Pennsylvania's Clean Slate Law today through a resolution. Community Legal Services has been at the forefront at fighting alongside our clients for the rights of people with criminal records for several decades. And city council has always been a true partner to us in that work, from collaborating on community-based record-clearing clinics to passing one of the strongest fair hiring laws in the country to funding the promised record-clearing initiative. So we thank you for that. And now, with Clean Slate on the precipice of being expanded as of this Monday, felony convictions, including old felony drug convictions, will be eligible for the very first time to be sealed under Pennsylvania law. About two-thirds of the clients who approach Community Legal Services Employment Unit every year come to us because they are struggling to find work or advance in their careers because of their criminal records, often records that are old and completely unrelated to their ability to be excellent employees. That led us in 2018 to advocate for the passage of the first Clean Slate Law, which to date has already sealed over 45 million records through automation and has become a national model. Twelve other states now have their own Clean Slate laws with more on the way. But now Pennsylvania joins the vast majority of states that allow some felony convictions to be sealed as well. And we know this is going to be so important for the hundreds of thousands of Philadelphians who are living with felony conviction records. Just over the past year, through our promised record-clearing clinics, we've seen that over half of the participants will be eligible to have their records fully cleared under this law. CLS is ready to partner with council to get the word out about this expansion to as many Philadelphians as possible. We want to help your constituents benefit from this law, and we look forward to being able to provide trainings, to do clinics in the community, and to continue to help as many folks as possible get a fresh start. And next up, you'll hear from my amazing colleague Nishay Jackson, who will talk about the personal impact that this will have on Philadelphians. Thank you.
Will a clerk please call the next speaker?
Good morning. My name is Nishay Jackson. I am a convicted felon, and I've been a convicted felon for over 30 years. For the past 34 years, I have lived my life as a law-abiding citizen. Even though I have been an upstanding citizen, I am still a convicted felon. Being a felon has haunted me. I love the law. Time after time, I have been denied employment. After every favorable interview, I was told, "It was a pleasure to speak with you, Nishay, only to get an email a few weeks later that started, 'Thank you for your interest.'" When it starts like that, you did not get the job. I was previously employed with the City of Philadelphia as a school-crossing guard ensuring the safety of students going to and from school. I loved that job. I volunteered with the national organization CASA. I have given four speeches. But when I got the email to speak at city council, the only thing that came to mind was, "I started from the bottom. Now I'm here. Straight." Enough about me. Allow me to share what record-clearing means to others. In 2018, Clean Slate gave over 45 million people some sort of record-clearing relief. On December 14th, Clean Slate 3.0 was enacted into law, which will allow some felony convictions to be sealed for the very first time. Let me repeat that. Felony convictions can be sealed for the very first time. That would mean that felons are now allowed to achieve their employment goals and that their mistakes will no longer define them, and they are someone that friends and family can be proud of. I'm in my fourth year of the pardon process, and I understand that feeling. I started my application in March of 2020. In October of 2023, the Board of Pardons voted on my application, five to zero. Application recommended. On January 15th, I attended the Barrister's Annual MLK Breakfast in the Crystal Tea Room in Center City with a sea of prominent lawyers, some civic organizations, the Lieutenant Governor, Meta-Mayor Sherrell Parker, state and federal judges, and along with mostly of you here today. Just talking about it gives me chills. I attended that event as Nishay Jackson, paralegal in the Employment Unit at Community Legal Services. The dream come true. It takes one person to see you, one person to believe in you. Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. Thank you for the important work that council does. Thank you for funding the promise and United Way and the Clean Slate Record Clearing Initiative. Thank you for seeing us. Thank you.
Will a clerk please call the next speaker?
commenting on 240074.
I'm Al Klosterman. I'm a member of the Harrogate Civic. For too long, our community has seen neglect and disinvestment from this city. No one saw or heard us. We felt hopeless. Then with redistricting, something changed. We now have three district council members representing our area and an at-large one who lives in the heart of it. They saw that the best way to aid our community was by banding together. Our members became more-- other members became more sympathetic to the cause. Our community has long worked and fought together in this goal, so we see this as the best approach. We stand together with our council members of the Kensington Caucus. The proposed triage center is the best idea we've heard yet to fix so many wrongs in a compassionate and positive way. The drug users would be directed to treatment and medical care and housing afterward. The residents would start seeing their neighborhood become clean and safe again, with stores, eateries, and other amenities returning. Children and elders could walk about without fear. Our civic meeting last week was one of our largest and most enthusiastic. People have a real feeling of hope. We, the community, are on board with this proposal. It needs to be done. Give us back our community.
Will a clerk please call the next speaker?
Good morning.
distinguished members of council, as a 28-year resident of the Harrogate area. When I tell you that this caucus listens to the residents of our community and has given us hope that we will once again have the neighborhood that I moved to 28 years ago for a better life, I'm so nervous right now because not only do I stand before you as a community member, I stand before you as someone who has been affected by the opioid epidemic. Because last year, I was sweeping in front of my house, and I had on sandals, and it was a needle in the brim, and I didn't see it, and it hit my foot. So I have to get HIV testing every three months for a drug that I've never used. I have grandkids that my children are fearful to let come to my house because where I lived at, the same neighborhood I raised them. I'm asking you to approve this caucus because we need our community back. We're tired of living like this. We're tired of being a containment facility for the drugs, not only in this city, but in the country. Any two-time Mexico uses your neighborhood as a cautionary tale for not using drugs, when the drugs mostly come from Mexico, you know you're in deep. We're asking y'all to please give us, the Kensington Caucus, to give hope and a voice back to the residents of my community. Thank you.
Thank you. Would a clerk please call the next speaker?
Crystal Anderson.
My name is Crystal Anderson. Good morning, everybody. I just want to say, I all too well know the disease of addiction. Every family has or has had a turn. Every city has a Kensington Avenue, and year after year, programs have been created to combat the war on drugs. While we all want to help the problem, in my opinion, providing addicts with clothes, clean needles, wound care treatment, condoms, crack pipes, and all kinds of paraphernalia keep them sick. Now, we're not opposing treatment. In the 80s and the 90s, black people were given a substantial amount of prison time, families were broken up, and kids were thrown into foster care. Now that the drugs have hit a different demographic, it's an epidemic. And now I see a lot of coddling. Where's the tough love? It's not pretty, but it's a step toward the right direction. We're tired of being sick and tired. In the last past 20-plus years, residents cannot come outside their doors without seeing nodding, shooting up in public, dirty needles littering, and seeing human feces on the ground. What kind of quality of life is that for the residents? We do not have to be subject to that. Kensington Caucus, number one priority is to come together as one and to restore quality of life in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would a clerk please read the next speaker? Call the next speaker, please.
Daisy Cardona, commenting on 240074.
My name is Daisy Cardona. I'm a lifelong Kensington resident and youth activist. I teach at the Rebel Arts School for Gymnastics and Tumbling with our scholarship program. Sorry. I was sitting today wondering what to bring forth for you today because frankly, every time we've been here fighting and rooting for our community, we've had people slamming on glass and just fighting to try and silence us. I have been, I have seen, I've lived in Kensington my whole life, I have seen this every single day since I was a little girl. So as have all of my students, a bunch of my students, and all the kids I see every day, our residents, our elders, and both young and old. And this is not fair. I'm here today to support the Kensington Caucus because frankly, my park is McPherson Square, yet everyone knows it as Needle Park. And I went and inspected it, and it's in pieces. It is not safe, and it is not fair for our community to be this way.
Would a clerk please call the next speaker?
Shannon Farrell. Commenting on 240074.
Shannon Farrell, president of the Harrogate Civic Association and 45th Ward Democratic Ward Leader. So I have lived in Harrogate my entire life. And last spring, we sat in Conwell, and we listened to a public safety hearing where a 10-year-old child got up and said, "I'm worried at night and can't sleep because I have to get my six-year-old sister to school safely. And then when I'm in school, I'm worried that I'm not going to get my six-year-old sister home safely." Thirty-six years ago, when I was a 10-year-old walking my siblings back and forth to school, I wasn't worried about it. I just wanted to make sure he didn't get hit by a car. That was the biggest concern I had. Get to school, don't get hit by a car, come home. He talked about having to walk over dirty needles, past drug dealers, how their school's been on lockdown for shootings. That is the perspective that we have to look at. Everything we do from now on doesn't make that 10-year-old safe. Doesn't make his six-year-old sister safe. Doesn't make all the kids in the community safe. For six years, I've sat in meetings with the past administration, some council members, and they consistently insisted that the most vulnerable people in our community were the drug users and not the children. So I support the Kensington Caucus because I know that they know the children and our senior citizens are our most vulnerable citizens, and we'll prioritize them for once because it's been years since anybody's cared about them. Thank you.
Would a clerk please call the next speaker?
Paul Newman, commenting on 240073.
My name is Paul Newman. Virtually absent from D-Day's iconic photos, documentary footage, and films are images of the 1,700 black soldiers who also landed on Omaha Beach. Overbrook High graduate, Waverly B. Woodson, served as a combat medic in the all-black 320th Barrage Balloon Battalion. A mine floating in the English Channel damaged the LST transporting Woodson and his unit to the beach. The explosion lodged shrapnel near Woodson's groin and back. His wound was superficially bandaged. Instead of seeking further treatment, Woodson stayed with his fellow medics as they set up a field dressing station. They treated all soldiers regardless of race. They worked as German machine gun fire and mortar rounds landed near them. Over the next 30 hours, Woodson and four other medics treated over 200 soldiers. They removed bullets and shrapnel, set broken limbs, dispensed plasma, and even amputated a foot. After working nonstop for 30 hours, and as Woodson walked to receive further treatment for his own wounds, some soldiers spotted his medic armband and frantically called out to him. They had pulled three men from the frigid waters of the English Channel. The men weren't breathing. An utterly exhausted Woodson ignored his own needs, performed artificial respiration, and saved three more lives. Woodson was awarded a Bronze Star for his bravery. In the 1990s, Woodson's unstinting bravery was considered for the Congressional Medal of Honor, but most of his service records were burned during a massive 1973 fire. He wasn't selected. In 1994, he was awarded France's Legion of Honor, that country's highest decoration. Two years ago, the United States Army Rock Island Arsenal Health Clinic was renamed in his honor. I'm here to ensure Waverly B. Woodson Jr. isn't forgotten in the city where he was born and grew up by having his name added to the 1,200 block of North 58th Street, his childhood home. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the public comment signing sheet?
There are no other speakers today, Mr. President.
That concludes today's public comment period. We will now consider the resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendar. Would a clerk please read the title of the resolution, 240073?
A resolution also naming the 1,200 block of North 58th Street, Waverly B. Woodson Jr. Way, in honor of war hero Waverly Bernard Woodson Jr. for his courageous and selfless service during World War II.
Okay. That's for Councilmember Jones. And so when he comes back, we will go back to that particular bill we'll call up. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number
A resolution establishing the Kensington Caucus to represent a united legislative front in addressing the crisis in the Kensington area.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Ketya Lazada for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President, and move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. Did the resolution be adopted? All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of bill of resolution number 240081?
A resolution recognizing nonprofit half a million kids to bring awareness to children living in foster care system and ways Philadelphia can work collaboratively to help find permanent homes for foster kids.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. Did the resolution be adopted? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of bill of resolution number 240073?
A resolution also naming the 1,200 block of North 58th Street, Waverly B. Woodson Jr. Way, in honor of war hero Waverly Bernard Woodson Jr. for his courageous and selfless service during World War II.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It has been moved and properly seconded. Did the resolution be adopted? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. Would a clerk please read any additional resolutions on today's final passage calendar?
A resolution honoring and commemorating the life and legacy of revered Philadelphian, professor, and architect Emanuel Kelly, introduced today by Councilmember Gardier.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gardier.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. Did the resolution be adopted? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and congratulating champion of the week, 5th grader Emily Enscore, for her work raising money for Project Home to help end cycles of poverty and homelessness in Philadelphia. A reminder to all of us that little Philadelphians can do big things. Introduced today by Councilmember Thomas.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. Did the resolution be adopted? All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing the impact of Pennsylvania's Clean Slate Law and celebrating its recent expansion. Introduced today by Councilmember Thomas.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank the team at Community Legal Services as well as the Public Defender's Office for all they do. And most importantly, I want to thank our colleagues in Harrisburg, who we call on all the time to do a lot of different things. And this is one of the situations that we got right. So with that level of gratitude, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. Did the resolution be adopted? All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Public Safety to hold public hearings examining witness relocation policies in the city of Philadelphia, as well as discuss strategies on creating a housing rehabilitation and witness relocation program that will allow for higher rates of witness attendance and an increase in the closure rate of homicide cases. Introduced today by Councilmember Jones.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for motion on the resolution.
Before I do that, I want to be voted aye on all bills and resolutions I may have missed, and I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. Did the resolution be adopted? All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And there are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
That completes our calendar for today. The time we all have been waiting for. Are there any speeches on the part of the minority? Are there any speeches on part of the majority? The chair recognizes the gentle lady from Kensington, Councilwoman Ketya Lazada.
Thank you, Council President. I came in here this morning, and I was going to say a whole lot of things. But I don't think I have to say anything, right? I think that community residents who showed up on behalf of their neighbors in the Kensington community have said enough. I also believe that the images that they brought us to see today, that our children unfortunately witness through the lens of their eyes on a daily basis, are exactly the reason why it was important for my colleagues and I to come together and collaboratively, strategically, and very intentionally work with one another to ensure that the residents, that the children in that community, became our priority. And I want to make it really clear to many who have reached out over the course of the weekend, over the course of this week, who consistently said that as a caucus, we were not compassionate, that we were not taking people's suffering into consideration. And I want them to know that that is far from true, that because we do, because we understand their suffering, because we are living by the oath that we took to protect and serve people, that what will happen over the next few, I'm going to say years, because I believe that what is going to happen in Kensington in order to restore the quality of life will take us a few years. Will be difficult to see. Last Thursday, as we sat here and we introduced the resolution to form the Kensington Caucus, there was an operation that took place. And we were blamed for that operation, right? The mayor and the administration was blamed for an operation that none of us had anything to do with. It was clarified in WHYY, it was clarified by the Kensington Voice that we had nothing to do with it. But let me not, let me say that although we had nothing to do with it, we are very supportive of our public safety partners who help protect communities like Kensington, who for many years have been under occupation. Because people have been afraid to make difficult decisions, the next few years will be difficult, and the optics of it will be more difficult. But we should ask ourselves, should our children be seeing those images every day? Or is it better for them to see an increase of police presence? Is it safe for them to walk by this every day? Or is it safe for them to walk by individuals who are there to ensure their safety? We have a responsibility as a city to ensure that our children, particularly those who we have failed over the course of the last few years, live and are given a better quality of life. of life. And so I want to say thank you to all of my colleagues who had questions about why we formed a caucus, why it was necessary to form a caucus. I want to say thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to have a conversation about the importance of it. I said last week, thank you for calling and your willingness to work and support us. When things get difficult, don't assume. Don't assume that we are doing it because we are prioritizing one over the other. Both communities, both populations in that community are equally as important to us as a caucus. We have a responsibility to ensure that those individuals who are living on our street have quality of life as well. We need to figure out where do we take them? What do we do with them? What we can't do is allow them to continue to live in the conditions that they are living in. Thank you, Council President.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember from the great Northeast, Councilman Mike Driscoll.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, and I echo Councilwoman Lazada's call to arms along with Councilmember Harity and Squilla, and all our colleagues today that voted for this. This is, a journey of a thousand miles begins with a single step, and that step begins today. And we will be working with the administration and bringing back ideas to this whole body so that we can fulfill our promise to these wonderful neighbors that came down here. And thank you for coming down here today. It was very important. Secondly, Mr. President, back in December, the LNI Task Force completed its work. We compiled a thirty-one-page report, which we sent to all the council members. There is a hard copy on every council member's desk today. Mayor Parker will be having a press conference at 1:00 PM to some big news with regard to LNI. And this document isn't finished. It's a living, working, breathing document that we can, we will endeavor to continue to improve so that we can give suggestions to Mayor Parker and whoever she appoints to Commissioner of LNI. And as Chair of LNI, I will be informing you, my colleagues, of our progress as that department beefs up and gets to some real work. And then lastly, just wanted to comment, since I've been in this body, I've been fighting to protect our city and its residents from pervasive problems that detract from the quality of life of all Philadelphians. Last year, our council enacted legislation cracking down on drifting and cracking down on boom parties. Well, recent years saw bad actors from across our region pour into our city with reckless driving, endangering lives, and severely affecting our quality of life. This recently enacted legislation raised penalties on these acts, subjecting vehicle owners to large fines and a possible seizure of their vehicles. We send a message that Philadelphia will not tolerate this behavior. Now is the time to turn our attention to another nuisance with potentially devastating ramifications, the use of tag flippers. And they're devices that flip or rotate the vehicle's license plate. It's proliferating our city. They're designed, built, and used by people to conceal their identity, often while committing crimes such as speeding, reckless driving, toll evasion, among others. A tag flipper could be used by someone fleeing a scene of an accident, perhaps somewhere where someone loses their life. The vehicle's caught on camera, but a tag flipper prevents the driver from being held accountable. The tag flipper prevents a family from finding solace in the arrest and conviction of their family member. So today, I've introduced a bill to give our law enforcement officers the tool necessary to remove these devices from our city, streets, and roads. This legislation will impose a $2,000 fine on anyone caught selling, purchasing, installing, or possessing one of these malignant devices. Tag flipping devices marketed as double oh seven devices belong in a James Bond movie. Tag flippers do not belong in the streets of Philadelphia. So thank you, Councilmembers Harity, Phillips, Squilla, Thomas, and Lazada, for co-sponsoring this forceful message that we'll send to the criminals. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Good work on the LNI Task Force as well. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo the words of my cousin, who actually testified today, Ms. Crystal Brown, regarding the issues that are in Kensington. You know, there was a time where folks who looked like us were treated differently for, you know, the same similar issues that are taking place in Kensington. And I just want to make sure that I work with the caucus to ensure that, you know, that they're being considerate of the public safety needs as well as the health needs of those in that particular area. We all know that when folks have the ability to move, you know, when they're, when heavy enforcement is on one area, they tend to move to another area. The Fifth Council District is very close to Kensington, and so I want to ensure that I work with the caucus to make sure that there are policies that keep everyone in this city safe from the drug epidemic. So thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes the gentleman from Kensington, Councilman Jim Harity.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, colleagues. First, I'd like to just send my condolences and my respect to the family of Emanuel Kelly. I had the pleasure of waiting on him for a few years in Haltz when I worked down there. He was always a gentleman, so I appreciate, you know, that we actually are honoring him. It's long overdue. There's a lot going on today in council. Secondly, I'd like to commend my colleagues, Councilman Driscoll, Squilla, and Councilwoman Lazada, for the Kensington Caucus bill. This is something that's needed. You know, as the councilwoman said, we got a lot of emails from a lot of different people. Most of them were form letters that were just coming in, and it kind of struck me one of the lines in there, which said that we were harassing people participating in the street economics. So that is just a nice way of saying that we were harassing the drug dealers who are poisoning our residents and our children. As you heard tales, we have people who live there and have lived there for years and seen the many different phases that the neighborhood has gone through. But when the lady testified about sweeping out front of her house and getting stuck with a used hypodermic needle and now having to be tested every three months, that's just horrible. And the fact of the matter is that we have a child that the same thing happened to, and now that child has to be tested every three months also. As somebody in recovery, I just want people to know that, you know, some of us don't go willingly. Some of us get recovery because we get sent to jail or we get mandatory into a rehab, you know? People look at it as we're forcing people in. Well, you know, we have a saying for that in recovery, and that's called a pallor greater than myself. We call it being touched by God's grace, because we all know that if it was up to us, we'd still be out there doing our addiction, you know? Even in our things, we ask that somebody else help us, that God helps us, or whoever you decide to call your higher power. We don't really care about that, just as long as you believe in something bigger than yourself. For me, you know, I believe in God, but I also believe in recovery, and I know for a fact that if you work a program and you follow the steps, you can get your life back. You can get your family back, and you can do things that are beyond your wildest imagination. Thirteen years ago, I would have never thought that I would be sitting in this chamber, but through recovery, here I am. So I commend all my colleagues in this body and our Council President for allowing us to form this committee. We look forward to working with all of you, because, you know, we all chair different committees that are going to be needed in order to do the right thing over there, to make everybody feel safe, not just the residents, but the addicts also. Sometimes we need help beyond ourselves. So I thank you all, and I look forward to working with the Kensington Caucus in the future to better that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm going to state for the record again and again until my brethren and sisterin and the Kensington Caucus, I'm an honorary member. And when we did those, when we did those hearings at Conley, that's what baptized us all to make a commitment to that neighborhood. And until Kensington is safe, no neighborhood, no neighborhood in Philadelphia is safe. So I commend you on what you're doing. So I rise today to thank you, Mr. President, and our mayor, Mayor Sherrell Parker, for being at the budget hearings, the budget presentation of our governor this week, where there was a lot of good news, a lot of bright things to look forward to in education, in economic development, in public higher education, a lot of good hallmarks, high points in that budget. One of the things that was raised by the governor was the skilled games issue, where he cited that he was going to finally get a hold of that process, that in 2017, when they opened the floodgates to say that these kinds of games should be allowed at truck stops, that opened the floodgates to our neighborhoods for the overproliferation of these bandit machines in places like Kensington. So what he talked about was a forty-two percent tax on these machines, which would equate to a hundred and fifty million dollars of revenue that could be dedicated to things like education, to things like drug treatment, that we can then kind of tap into, because at this point, we don't know what they make. At this point, we don't know where they are. At this point, they don't have a unified payout. I think to when my former colleague DeChico had to go to all of those hearings, all of those community meetings, to establish casinos in the Philadelphia, he stood up to a lot of scrutiny, a lot of criticism, a lot of regulation, just to be able to legally put those machines in neighborhoods with a community benefit agreement attached. So thank you, Mr. President, for giving us a date for those hearings, so that we can, once again, third time's a charm, try to regulate. One of the things that this governor actually implements these things, they will supersede what we will do. They will be big brother to little brother and sister. But what we will be able to do is license them. We will be able to permit, scan, track where they are, and the LNI nuisance task force will be able to regulate where they are and what kind of crime they are attracting. And I'm aware that this is a powerful lobby, and I'm aware that probably because of what we're doing right here, that has got our state colleagues ready to move. I get it, but sometimes gravity happens anti-gravity, that from a local level, we make bigger brothers, sisters move on an issue that has sat idle since 2017. Better late than never. Thank you, colleagues and Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Anthony, well, popped in there. Excuse me. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Council President. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank and congratulate our colleague Councilmember Mike Driscoll and his team, Tom and Jacob, and so many others, who worked very, very hard on the joint task force on regulatory reform for the Department of Licenses and Inspections. So I wanted to applaud you and thank you for that great work, and also, congratulations. And also to the Kensington Caucus, I look forward to continuing to work with each of you on that very important work for the Kensington community. But Council President, today I wanted to also thank General Manager Leslie Richards, Acting Board Chair Ken Lawrence, our Chair of Transportation, Councilmember Driscoll, our Vice Chair of Transportation, Councilmember Young, Councilmember Cindy Bass, and so many of you who have worked with us on the SEPTA Bus Revolution Plan. I wanted to thank them at SEPTA Wendy for your partnership and for your collaboration, for your willingness to take the late phone calls into the evening and into the night. I am certainly appreciative of the opportunity so that we can ensure that every Philadelphian is heard in this process and not just a vocal few. I want to thank you, colleagues, for attending the briefing last week. We're in, we were able to see a number of data points that were shared, and as a result of the information that we received, we're able to work with SEPTA to ensure that we have additional community and civic engagement opportunities in four council districts on both sides of each district. Again, I think it's important to state for the record, Mr. President, that I applaud SEPTA for their deep collaboration, for their commitment to working together to get this plan right. SEPTA's work really should serve as a model for other agencies and organizations on how you continue to work to get something right. This is the first time this plan will be changed, all of our bus routes, in seventy years. So if it takes a few more days or a few more weeks, folks have to be okay with that. Together, we are working to ensure that SEPTA is not only fully funded, but that our transit system provides a safe and a pleasurable experience for all of us. And I want everybody to hear me clearly on this. This is important. For all those who were the loudest in 2020, that Black Lives Matter, for all those who stood with us and did this, for all those who claim that they believe in racial equity when making decisions, show us right now that you believe in that, in this defining moment in our transit system. Show us that you mean what you said, because we do not only hear what you say, we are watching what you do. Philadelphia has deeply rooted communities, especially black and brown communities, that have been using the bus transit system for generations, and we rely on the bus for our everyday lives, to buy food, medicine, to get to work, to pick up our children, to go to the doctor's office. So understanding the needs of riders in Winfield, in Strawberry Mansion, in Longcrest, Alney, Nice Town, Hunting Park, just to name a few, requires deep understanding of how residents in those neighborhoods live and what they actually need. And I'm adding in the Northeast as well, because they deserve a voice in this process and not just two meetings. To many residents, the current version of the bus plan was another example of a tale of two cities, a place where changes benefit more affluent communities and leaves those who have lived here and held this city on their shoulders the longest behind. For years, I've been watching as experts and specialists show up in our neighborhoods to tell us what we need and what will make our lives better without ever really listening to what we want. I want to be clear, you can't be for us without us. I'm a lifelong Philadelphian who has seen growth and development explode in our city, and I've waited with my family members and friends And I've waited with my family members and friends from Sybert Street down to Jackson Street for that growth to benefit all of us. So working with SEPTA in a partnership and in a collaborative manner to ensure that the biggest transportation project in a generation truly meets the needs of all of our residents is how we ensure that racial equity can be a reality in America's poorest big city. So I thank you very much for your partnership and for your collaboration, and for all of those who are understanding the need for us to ensure that we get this right for every single Philadelphian, not just those who are the vocal few. Thank you.[1308.13][1308.13](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say, you know, I think so highly of Councilwoman Catherine Gilmore Richardson. I'm just, she's our Majority Leader, and this weekend is her 40th birthday. And we just want to say thank you for always advocating for her. What amazing. I also want to tell Council President, I said, see, people stick around for us at the end because you start us on time. So I just want to say thank you, good sir. I won't, I'm going to be like a pastor, I won't be long. I'm just going to come for you, but I'm really not going to be long. I just want to simply say, you know, to my colleague, Councilmember Driscoll, thank you for your work around the LNI piece of legislation, incredible. We have to get that right. And also to the Kensington Caucus led by Councilwoman Lazzada, I mean, just amazing. City of Philadelphia, we are going to get this done. And Lazzada's been leading the charge, and I know the mayor has her back, and we're going to get this one done. I know it, for sure.[1381.13][1381.13](APPLAUSE). I, I, I have, I come before you today because when I started on the city council, I wanted to be able to make as much impact in the city of Philadelphia. There was a lot of noise around the city of Philadelphia about, you know, who is this person that's going to replace Sherrell Parker on Philadelphia City Council? And then out of nowhere, this guy who is not as political, Anthony Phillips, comes out of the pocket, and they're like, who the heck is he? And I just wanted to do right by her to make sure that folks, you know, understood and respected why, you know, she, you know, was able to push me. And I also wanted to do right by the city of Philadelphia because I love, love, love service. So coming out the gates, I wanted to see how it could be as impactful and learn all at the same time. And so when we first started, we had a lot of staff transition. Rachel Meadows left our office shortly after I started to go work for the mayor, and she's incredible as a legislative director. And me having a youth development background, I was looking for somebody that kind of fits my style and how we work. And I found, well, didn't find, but I was able to identify and work with a young man by the name of Jamil Duncan, who's behind me today. Jamil has been in government since he was 14 years old. And let me tell you, I met Jamil when I was doing youth work in the city of Philadelphia with an organization called Urbed. Jamil was first brought in by, to government by State Senator Sharice Street, who also worked closely with Councilman Jim Harity when he was the Chief of Staff over for State Senator Sharice Street. They were struck by his intelligence as an eighth grader going into ninth grade, and they said, I want you to come intern and work with us. And lo and behold, he became a quick learner, and he became really top of government work and so forth. And I must say to you, he's one of the most intelligent young people I ever met in this, ever in my life. And so at the age of 18, we brought him here back to city council after he had worked for two other members. And so thus far, we put together about a couple bills, major ones, ski masks, V cushions. And we also were able to work closely on some resolutions and hearings and so forth. Jamil has been a good partner, and what I say, good crime, to the city of Philadelphia with me. And we're going to miss him because my predecessor also found a way to love him. He's going to be working in the mayor's office, transitioning, starting next week in the legislative affairs. So Jamil Duncan, today is his last day. I don't expect him coming back to city council.[1551.13][1551.13](APPLAUSE). And I just wanted to quickly acknowledge you and say thank you, my brother, and thank you for your service to the city of Philadelphia. And we look forward to seeing all of the things that you do. Well wishes and best of luck. Congratulations.[1568.01][1568.01](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations, young man. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Amay.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to make sure I told the Kensington Caucus, as the Chair of the Public Health Committee, that I will be working very closely with them so we have evidence-based, sensible solutions to the problems we are encountering, and that we do it in an equitable and compassionate way. And I pledge to you that we will bring your hearings up, the committee hearings, and we will work on it. And I commend all of you for being proactive. And I think as the community has responded today by saying they've been given hope. So I join them in saying I have hope, and I look forward to working with all of you and looking at this as a public health epidemic so we can get some real solutions to resolve this matter. Thank you.[1631.41][1631.41](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Hearing no more speeches, I think since I've been here since 2011, as a former state representative making the transition to city council, I've been here since 2011. This is probably the first time, and this is the first time, that I've seen the whole council body pretty much rally around, supporting their colleagues and addressing the issue, right, regardless of is your representative area or not. And that's the only way we're going to move this great city of Philadelphia forward, by working together.[1669.04][1669.04](APPLAUSE). So I commend the spirit of collaboration on addressing the issue. I want to also say, because we won't have an opportunity to see this young lady between now, well, you will get a chance to see between now and next week, but between now and next session of council, let's acknowledge, because it's a milestone, the 40th birthday of our Majority Leader, Catherine Gilmore Richardson.[1699.01][1699.01](APPLAUSE). It's a big deal. And I want to see everybody before next Thursday, so Happy Valentine's Day, y'all. With that being said, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Council President. Echo your sentiments with the happy birthday as well as the Happy Valentine's Day. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, February 15, 2024, at 10:00 a.m. properly.[1730.26][1730.26](APPLAUSE).
It has been moved, and property second, the council stand adjourned until Thursday, February 15, 2024, at 10:00 a.m. All in favor would signify by saying aye. Those opposed?